Krishnamurti, Krishnamurti, the board member of the Coalition of Hindus of North America. Their place of worship is the Hindu temple of Atlanta in Riverdale, Georgia. And would you please let me know you're on the line?
Yes, Madam President, I hope you can hear me.
I can hear you. How do you pronounce your name? Because I know I may have not done it well.
You did it well. It is Krishnamurti. That's fine.
Thank you. And if you could, please offer us our invocation.
Om Shri Gurukyardanamaham. Om Swastikajapjapparipalayantam. Gop Brahmanechya Shupamastanityam. Loka Samastha Sukhino Bhavantu. Kali Vakshatupacchanyah. Prithivi Chasyashalin. Desho Yamchohara Gita. Brahmanasantu Nirbhaya. Aputra Putrina Santu. Putrina Santu Au Putrina. Adhanasvadhanasantu. Jivam Chasaratam Shatam. Om Chan Tishan Tishantihi. Swastikajapjapparipalayantam. May we nurture the good health of our citizens. Jñayenamarkhenamahimahisha. May the Almighty always help us stay on the path of righteousness and justice. Gop Brahmanechya Shupamastanityam. May the most vulnerable among the animals and our people be ever auspicious. Loka Samastha Sukhino Bhavantu. May all the people of the world be happy. Kali Vakshatupacchanyah. May the rains come on time. Prithivi Chasyashalin. And render our lands fertile. Desho Yamchohara Gita. May the land always remain beautiful. Brahmanasantu Nirbhaya. May the most vulnerable people be unafraid always. Aputra Putrina Santu. May those without children be get children. Putrina Santu Au Putrina. May those with children get grandchildren, thereby sustaining our society. Adhanasvadhanasantu. May those without wealth gain wealth. Jivam Chasaratam Shatam. May all live to be over a hundred years. Om. May there be peace. May there be peace. May there be peace. On behalf of the Hindu community of Georgia and the Coalition of Hindus in North America, I wish to thank President Moore for this opportunity, and we wish you all our very best. Thank you.
And thank you so much for joining us and offering our invocation prayer. Thank you. So now, members, if we will all join into the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and just justice for all. Thank you. I understand that we're joined by Ms. Boone on the desk. Boone present, and Mr. Brown.
Brown present.
Any other members join us since roll call? All right. Now, we will go to the special recognition, proclamations, commendation, and other awards, which we skipped during this remote meeting. And we will now go to the remarks by the public. And if you can announce for the members the length of the remarks for the public, that will be great too. Mr. Clark.
The public may leave a comment that they have concerns the day before. The scheduled meeting between hours of 4:00 PM and 7:00 PM by dialing 404-330-6001. Public comments for the full Council of Ninjas shall not exceed two minutes. In addition, the Committee on Council will enter the Committee of the Whole, and the public may express their individual concerns for the committee by dialing 404-330-6069. We have approximately eight minutes for public comment, Madam President.
I'm calling the City Council to ask that you recognize the 21st century. If the United States did, they have been said truth is at your age. But let's be clear, we are conceived just to show the frank expression. Just to whisper there. The demonstration tried it there. The freaky got us to breathe who wanted to argue. Did two train, two times. But think about what had to be there concurrent along. We had more, nothing like the rum and soon as we got going. But if this ever the now, the now flow down the days that young men had on the street at the baseball field. The layout read, did that, now be heard about a people scared like to have access to housing. He told that I was trying to see that the people had. Now I'm gonna ask you this, how is that we can be one and do back in 21st century? And we have person running through the city council. And some of the people have been got on the wrong records in the essence of their district. And started some of that distance as they got to something. But look at today. You got Mr. Young saying, bring it to another town. Mr. Young, what is it that poor people have to do? They don't have houses, they don't have a train for them in the city of Atlanta. They don't have access to resources, but you freaks keep telling us the other that somebody wins up the recital. They are nature, this should drug that ain't going to harm. The God, through the spirit of the Creator. occasion allow help us help now then be specific that you. Lightness in the real help or bringing the church. They are making okay, I say nothing.
Even I just said, Christ, my name is Unrued Jordan. For he that sitteth against me wrong with his own soul. All they that hate me love death. 5:8 chapter 3 verse. Who so finds me finds life. To obey Jesus is life, James Montgomery. To disobey is death. For the heart of the people is waxed rough. And their ears are double hearing. And their eyes have been closed. Lest they should see with their eyes and hear with their ears. And understand with their hearts. And shall be converted, and I should heal them. At 28 chapter 27 verse. These Jews listening to Paul mentions that God has not sent me up to Gentile. Jesus sent me to the holiest calling on Jesus to help you. Enter not in the path of the wicked. And go not in the way of evil men. 5:4 chapter 14 verse. This is a good summary of the theology of the Gentile book. Too fast to choose from. For he that curses his mother, his father, or his mothers, your children be put to death. Exodus 21:17 verse. The death penalty was required for those who cursed his father and mother. The curse is there, there are not the immediate penalty. Jesus bought grace and truth for us to repent of our sins and commit to Jesus Christ.
Please, my name is Brian Chukie. I'm with Atlanta, District 11. I have been very concerned about the housing crisis that I see unrolling or folding, unfolding in our city every day. But none is striking or none is more impactful as legislation commercializing rezoning housing in the city of Atlanta for families residential. This commercial disguise of housing called Airbnb is causing a disruption. A lady who lived across the city from me with four children had accepted a voucher. The house was sold. And I believe there is permit to be prepared as soon as they get the green light from the legislation and the mayor of the great city of Atlanta. The attorneys of Airbnb, they disguise as family housing. But their Airbnb, a resident in the city recently moved in paying a thousand bucks a month she had to secure to have housing. And she works in daycare industry. Don't let the legacy of Atlanta roll back to African Americans not being able to live in this city because of legislators. Legislators have a great responsibility. Don't let it be that you have turned the families away from being able to stay in this city called Atlanta, Georgia, the light on the hill. For African Americans have disbelief in housing and communities and the feeling of living themselves.
A special greetings to you citizens and voters of Atlanta monitoring your government elections. Ben Howard, senior aggregate public policy analyst. I come again to talk about the NCUR 9. Why? If we had an hour, I could bend your ear. But consider this. NCUR is in southwest Atlanta, one of the four quadrants of our city. Following a municipal election a few years ago, the invested southwest campaign was put into the hands of a member of the NCUR 9. And then began our troubles. When the NCUR 9 failed to shout invest, Stevie's pharmacy divested. When the NCUR 9 failed to shout invest, SNS cafeteria divested. Other losses during the long reign of the NCUR 9 syndicates include pistols, IHOP, Magic Johnson theaters and Fridays, Red Lobster, the mini golf course behind the pawn shop, and Macy's where the NCUR 9 used the community room to secretly control the NCUR community. So we the people benefited by every bit of sunlight that can be shined upon. Anthony Robinson, Colvin's Claire, Ricardo Jacobs, Lynette O'Scott, Calvin White, Allison Hathaway, Cheryl Brown, DJ Max, Jerry, and the NCUR 9 syndicates.
Hello, my name is Ms. Margie, and good afternoon, City Councilman, Councilor at large. I'm back again. What is a good leader? And August 3, I'm gonna address this to you. Because what the good leader is, many times I have called in and told you about the accidents on Bill Adam Park. You have not come out here to check, to make sure the signs is upright at all. So are you a good leader? No, you're not. It's unfortunate you might not get back in because you did not pave these streets. The barber shop talking about you? The hair salon, the community, how many cars is all messed up? I didn't tell them, hey, charge it to the city. Because you don't think that we are good enough or you wanna wait till you get back in? Before you pave these streets? We are tired waiting. That's always them waiting. And that was your promise, not fix, not pack, pave these streets. Pave them like you got them in your diamond home road. And now y'all need to reach out and touch, so.
This is Brian Warren, an applicant in support of proposal rezoning D 2059 at 910 Lindbergh Drive. This proposal was previously favorable unanimous by the August 23 zoning committee and unanimous favorable by the August 5 zoning review board. The rezoning is to reconfigure the property into four middle residential lots, R5, with frontages conforming with existing lot layout patterns and design as requested by the Lindbergh Martin Manor Association Board Reps. The proposed concept is compatible with the neighborhood here being adjacent to existing duplexes across the street. And is consistent with a TDP carriage area for missing middle transitional zoning. And is a transitional property from the Lindbergh FPI next to a high density residential land use. And most of the property is given historically commercial land use as recently as 2011 and 2015 TDP. This site begins one half mile from Lindbergh Mars Station and front.
Hi, my name is Dean Micho. I'm calling to give comment on the rezoning of the property on Lindbergh Drive belonging to Brian Warnock from. I'm.
Okay, that is the end of our public comment. We didn't have to cut the last public comments because, please mute your phones, they were related to zoning. All zoning matters, all public comments are taken up. Please mute your phones are taken up during our zoning review board meetings. That is the public comment section for zoning. So that is why those comments were cut. We will now move on to the report of the Journal, and I first of all would like to thank all of those participated in our public comment. Mr. Clark.
I force will. Municipal clerk do certify that the actuarial minutes of this September 20, 2021 regular city council meetings are true and correct.
Okay, I'll entertain the motion to accept and file. So move. Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Faroki, second by Masakai to accept and file. Any discussion? Hearing none on unanimous consent of members present. It is accepted and filed. I think the only one that had not been recognized was Mr. Shook. Are you on the line?
I am, thank you. Voice only.
Okay. Mr. Clark, unanimous consent on accepting and filing the report of the Journal.
Unanimous consent of members present is 15 yeas, 0 nays.
15 yeas, 0 nays. It's accepted and filed. Now we'll move to communications. Mr. Clark.
Yes, Madam President. I can find items 1 and 2 of the block.
Proceed.
21 dash speed dash 0125, a communication from Deputy Skopinski, President Atlanta Planning Advisory Board, submitting the appointment of Mr. Carolene Dingman to serve as a member of the Atlanta Beltline Tax Allocation District Advisory Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years. 21 dash speed dash 0126, a communication from Deputy Skopinski, President Atlanta Planning Advisory Board, submitting the appointment of Mr. James Holmes to serve as a member of the Atlanta Beltline Tax Allocation District Advisory Committee. This appointment also is for a term of two years. Staff recommendation to refer to committee development in the Services Committee and Committee on Council.
Let it follow their course. Next item.
And if I can find items 3 and 4 of the block as well.
Proceed.
21 dash speed dash 0127, a communication from Fifth Lake Houston Torrance, Chair Atlanta Citizens Review Board, submitting the appointment of Mr. Samuel L. Reed II to serve as a member of the Atlanta Public Safety Commission. 21 dash speed dash 0128, a communication from Nina Hickson, Atlanta City Attorney, appointing Karen Edwards to serve as a member of the Public Safety Commission. Staff recommendation to refer to Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee and Committee on Council.
Let it follow their course. Proceed.
If I can find the last two items of the block.
Proceed.
21 dash speed dash 0129, a communication from Patrick LeBach, Holden County Sheriff, accepting service to the State of Atlanta, Holden County Joint Committee. 21 dash speed dash 0130, a communication from Chief Security Officer Martin Clark, submitting September 13, 2021 through September 17, 2021, weekly contract support to the Atlanta City Council and Clerk of Council, pursuant to section 2 dash 1142 of the Atlanta Code of Ordinances. Staff recommendation to accept and file motion.
Staff recommendation is to accept and file. I entertain a motion. You do so.
So move.
Shook, I.
Motion by Bond, second by Shook. Any discussion? Hearing none on unanimous consent. It is accepted and filed, Mr. Clark.
Madam President, I omitted one item, which was item 7, 21 dash speed dash 013.
Let's do these, let's do these two, please.
Apologies.
Uh huh. So unanimous consent on.
Unanimous consent is 15 yeas, 0 nays.
15 yeas, 0 nays. They're accepted and filed. Proceed.
21 dash speed dash 0131, a communication from Chief Security Officer Martin Clark, submitting the September 20, 2021 through September 24, 2021, weekly contract support to the Atlanta City Council and Clerk of Council pursuant to section 2 dash 1142 of the Atlanta City Code of Ordinances. Staff recommendation to accept and file.
Staff recommendation is to accept and file. I entertain a motion.
First, Shook, I. Second.
Motion by Shook, second by Bond to accept and file. Any discussion? Hearing none on unanimous consent of members present. It is accepted and filed, Mr. Clark.
Unanimous consent is 15 yeas, 0 nays.
It is accepted and filed. We're now at consideration of detailed legislation.
There are no items to report.
Unfinished business.
No unfinished business.
All right, we're now at consent agenda. Consent agenda section 1 contains all those items that have gone through the Standing Committee and received a unanimous favorable recommendation. Members, are there any items to be removed from consent agenda section 1?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Item 9, page 9, item 6, 21 dash R dash 4056.
21 R dash what?
21 R dash 4056.
Thank you. Any other members? In what committee was that, Ms. Shepherd?
Public safety.
Okay. Any other items to be removed? Hearing none. Let's open the vote on consent agenda section 1 minus item 6 on page 9 from under Public Safety, 21 R 4056. We will hear that during the Standing Committee. Let's open the vote.
Please hold. Shook, I.
Hold on one second, Mr. Shook. Go ahead.
The vote is now open. Will everyone please vote?
Ms. Boone, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Shook?
I.
Is that for Ms. Winslow in favor?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh huh. Brown?
Thank you.
Mr. Brown? Okay, Mr. Bond?
I.
Okay, I'll ask again for Mr. Brown. Okay, all votes are cast in the affirmative with a no vote, not a no vote, without Mr. Brown responding, I'll put it that way.
The vote is now closed. 14 yeas, 0 nays.
14 yeas, 0 nays. Consent agenda section 1 is adopted. Consent agenda section 2 is our next item, which consists of items that are on first read here at this meeting and will be referred as indicated to the respective meeting. Meetings, and so I will refer them, and we will follow the course, that course. And now we will go to the report of our Standing Committee, the first being the Committee on Council, and we will need to go into Committee of the Whole. The chair is the Honorable JP Masakai.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll make a motion to go into the Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Motion by Masakai, second by Bond to go into the Committee of the Whole. Any discussion? Hearing none on unanimous consent of members present. We will enter into the Committee of the Whole, Mr. Clark.
Unanimous consent is 15 yeas, 0 nays, Madam President.
Thank you. Is how many yet? Yeas?
15 yeas, 0 nays, Madam President.
Okay, Mr. Brown, are you on the line? I think it's 14. Mr. Brown is not on the line.
Thank you, Madam President. Newly noted 14 yeas, 0 nays.
14 yeas, 0 nays. We are now in Committee of the Whole, Mr. Masakai.
Thank you, Madam President. The first item on the agenda for the Committee on Council today is public comment. Staff, could please play the public comments and also let us know the approximate time that we have for public comment. That would be helpful.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the approximate time is 8 minutes and 3 seconds.
I am a brother and holy amen. I am a soul, a spiritual being. And I'm whole or believing in religion. But I understand that our will to represent the Creator has been found. The truth is what we thought, and that's why I call this time on a visit. You had 19 minutes initiated, data, and then commissioned. And today, 2021, there are women and children with dark part of the house. There are women and children that find themselves wrong to just put some fool on a table to underpend damage. And they're being locked up, thrown away, institution of prison, prison in this United States of America, judge. And it's continued to become lies and lies. Right? Because these have lost the real right that we're. We don't have no deed to represent our own people that look like us. The majority of citizens in the city are not, the capital is still darker people. They have the largest number of a children still are darker people. We have a state with the largest lack of confidence in the United States for picking some clutter. Judges, legislators, and we can raise and take support of the churches and legislators to do right for poor women and children. Majority of people in the city are women and children, and the majority of people are colored or darker than you. For as you cry, you see. Unlike yourself, it's lined up with the conscience that's doing right for those they cannot do for themselves. We have lost the real to represent the democratic interest. We have not represented the democratic interest. And all these years, since the sixties, women have fight and rock in the bottom of the tree. They are nature, we need someone to be put in the office that will represent the real of women and children. Spiritual real to want to do right, transparency. I am a brother. That's not continued to put people in office that look out for the vision. And the people that have more resources and don't give a throning about the poor people. You had an administration that has had trouble with the system of government. It provided transparency, admitted people who that administration locked up in CBO. We're not having a real one to put somebody over there sympathetic and empathetic to the real resurrection of darker people in America. We deserve more judges. We deserve more judges. You owe us judges. You owe us what you have stolen from our ancestors.
Greetings, members and staff of the Committee on Counsel, and certain greetings to you citizens and voters of Atlanta who are listening, and Howard, senior advocate, public policy analyst. On the agenda for the M P U R meeting this coming Wednesday evening, October sixth, is quote, adoption of bylaws, unquote. The M P U R nine will not let the wording be quote, discretion and adoption of bylaws, unquote. There will be no discussion of the recommendation that M P U R meet year round. There'll be no discussion of the recommendation that will physically challenge, be encouraged to participate in M P U R meetings. There will be no discussion of anything dealing with adding to the fifty people who attend periodically M P U R meetings. Will the call for ethics and proper conduct ever extend to neighborhood planning units armed? No, not as long as the M P U R nine is allowed to fake an ethical and democratic process for revising those M P U R bylaws. There'll be no recommendation of meeting notices to be mailed to all who do not access the internet or communicate via email. It won't be Wednesday, so only one can only hope for the day when the spotlight of ethics and proper conduct might shine on the M P U R nine. Anthony Robinson, Carlos Clare, Ricardo Jacobs, Renette L. Scott, August White, Alison Hathaway, Cheryl Brown, Agent X, Sherry Williams, and the M P U R nine cohorts, supporters, and protectors. Let us hope for that day, when ethics and democracy prevail.
Greetings, Committee, Committee on Counsel. I am saddened and afraid of our elected officials and their lack of securing to the housing crisis that's in Atlanta. Their lack of reviewing or measuring the impact of the legislation on the lives of citizens to be able to have shelter in the city of Atlanta. This place that was quite different for most, that there was an opportunity to live in a neighborhood with all the amenities, housing, and schools and public safety. I wish you'd measure now and connect the dark mindset when people don't have housing, secure housing. And I would hope that you look seriously before you license and before you take lightly of the impact of legislation that look innocent like Airbnb's, where people are finding unable to find housing because you have these commercial events, properties disguised, and these different myths that you see of a new type of housing preparation that does not connect people to stable lives in their community, but just for a temporary place with great properties. Sailing and getting your support throughout this thing. Children need stable communities. Airbnb does not stay, but New York and other cities, I don't know how they have done, but over a year ago, they have re reconsidered and have, um, put a more, they have put a more, my God. They have a moratorium on licensing any more Airbnb's because of the impact they have into the community. I'm afraid that you care about the lives of these citizens who need houses.
All right, I believe that ends our public comment. Uh, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which are communications. We have three communications today, and, uh, without objection, I'd like to take those three as a block.
Proceed.
Hearing no, thank you, hearing no objections. The first is twenty-one C zero one zero eight, which is a communication from Donna Hall, Chair of Central Atlanta Progress Board of Directors, submitting the appointment of Mr. A. J. Robinson to serve as a member of the Public Safety Commission. This was favorable by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee on the twenty-seventh of September. Next is twenty-one C zero one two three, a communication from Patrick LaBott, Fulton County Sheriff, appointing his Amanda Pritchett to serve as a member of the Public Safety Commission. This was also favorable by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee on the twenty-seventh of September. And the third communication is twenty-one C zero one two four, communication from council members Howard Shook, J. P. Matzakite, and Matt Westmoreland, uh, appointing Ms. Sherry Gates-McGoy to serve as a member of the Zoning Review Board. This appointment is for a term of two years and was favorable by the zoning committee on the twenty-seventh of September. I'll make a motion to confirm all three communications.
Second.
There's a motion to confirm by the Chair Matzakite, is second by Mr. Bond. Any discussion? Hearing none. Let's open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Okay, I am not able to see my screen at this one moment. Give me two seconds. Let's get back into it. Uh, members who are not on the, uh, screen, are, are there, let me do it this way, there, uh, uh, are there any objections? Hearing none on unanimous consent. Members present, they are confirmed, and I will get them. Mr. Clerk?
Unanimous consent is fourteen yeas, zero nays.
All right, fourteen yeas, zero nays. They're confirmed. Proceed, Mr. Matzakite.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll go to, uh, resolutions, and we have two resolutions without objection. I'd like to take those as a block.
Proceed.
All right, the first is twenty-one R thirty-nine thirty-four, a resolution by Councilmember Andre Dickens, authorizing the establishment of a commission on fatherhood, men and boys, for the purpose of providing an organized and collaborative structure for the discussion and development of policy recommendations regarding issues specifically facing fathers, men, and boys of the city of Atlanta, and for other purposes. And the next is twenty-one R four zero five seven, a resolution by Committee on Counsel, authorizing the twenty twenty-one, city of Atlanta executive and legislative branches, let legislative time scheduled to be amended to remove all city council standing committee meetings currently scheduled for December thirteenth through the fifteenth, and for other purposes. I'll make a motion to approve those items.
Is there a second, Brown?
Second.
Motion by Matzakite. Any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none on unanimous consent. Members present, it is, uh, adopted. Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, it, I believe I just heard Councilman Brown. Has he rejoined the meeting?
Uh, yes, I, I, I've been on the meeting, but I was muted, or you guys couldn't hear me, so I had to hang up and call back in, so I apologize. Hello, okay?
Unanimous consent is fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays. It is adopted. Next item?
Um, Madam President, that concludes the business of the, uh, Committee on Counsel today. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Let's, uh, entertain a motion, go back into regular session.
So moved Matzakite. Second, Brown.
Motion by Matzakite, second by Brown, to go back into, uh, regular session. Any discussion? If there's no objection on unanimous consent, a pres- members present, we will go back into regular session. I'll entertain a motion, uh, now to, um, what am I trying to do? I'm entertaining a motion now for us to adopt and gross all actions taken.
So moved Matzakite.
In the Committee's Hall, okay, is there a second?
Second, Brown.
Second by, by Brown. Any discussion? If not, let's open the vote.
Please vote.
I am trying to get into my system while you're doing that. Give me one second. I am not able to. Get it on.
The vote is now open. Will everyone please vote?
All right, I, I'm trying to get, uh, back on my screen, and I'm trying to type my password, but it's not letting me. So, um, let's see, um, any members who are not on the system, please state your vote. Brown, is it yea? Anyone else that is not on the system? In favor, Winslow?
Yea, Bond.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Shook, needs to get on the system?
No, but I'm an aye.
All right, Ms. Sh- okay, I think I got everyone else. Okay, all votes are cast in the affirmative.
Do we have one more, one more council person, which is Councilwoman Boone?
Yes, my, I'm trying to get on the system, but yes.
Duly noted. Populated vote. The vote is now closed. Fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays. Uh, it is adopted. All actions, uh, taken in the Committee as a whole are adopted. So we will now move to our next standing committee as soon as I can see the agenda on teams, because I'm still trying to get into my, back into my system. All right, the next standing-
Next committee would be Public Safety and Legal Administration, Madam President.
Thank you so much, uh, the Honorable Joyce Shepherd, Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm going to be reading in, uh, legislation twenty-one dash R four zero five six, an amendment by City Council, a resolution to appoint members to serve on the Atlanta Public Safety Training Center, Community Stakeholders Advisor Committee and for other purposes. We actually passed this legislation for public safety on this pad last Monday. However, we omitted a neighborhood group that I'm actually going to ask for an amendment today. I'm adding this amendment pretty much, just to add Mr. Michael Fears' ignored manner of under the city of Atlanta entity to the stakeholders group. So that is my amendment.
Second, Smith.
Okay, there's a second by Smith, a motion by Shepherd to amend. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none on unanimous consent of members present, uh, we will accept the amendment. All right, and now the-
Unanim-
Thank you.
No, Madam President, unanimous consent is fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays, and it is amended. Now, uh, the motion will be to adopt as it has been amended, and if there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Let's open the vote on the motion to adopt as amended.
The vote is now open. Will everyone please vote?
Okay, Mr. Shook, how do you vote?
Aye.
Winslow?
In favor.
Brown?
Yea.
Smith? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Bond?
Aye.
All votes are cast in the affirmative.
The vote is now closed. Populating vote. Populating vote. Fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays. It is adopted. Next item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, we will now move to our next standing committee, and that will be the zoning committee, the Honorable Mayor Faroki, Chair.
Thank you, uh, Madam President, and, uh, fellow council members, we have only three items today. Um, the zoning committee report, um, to sit on agenda page thirty-nine, if folks want to follow along that way. Uh, I'll read, uh, each of the three items individually. They're all ordinances for a second read. Item number one, legislation number twenty-one oh zero two eighty-three, zoning case number Z twenty-one thirty-seven. Location is ten ten and ten forty West Marietta Street, nine forty-nine and nine forty-nine rear, nine fifty-seven, nine sixty-three, nine seventy-three, Herndon Street, nine sixty-three, ten fifty-four, ten sixty, ten sixty-two, ten sixty-four, ten seventy, Baylor Street, ten fifty-four, ten fifty-seven, ten sixty, ten sixty-one, ten sixty-four, ten sixty-five, ten si- ten sixty-nine, ten seventy-one, ten seventy, ten seventy-three, ten seventy-four, ten seventy-five, ten seventy-six, ten eighty-one, ten eighty-two, ten eighty-five, and ten eighty-six, Riddled Street, ten fifty-six, ten fifty-eight, ten sixty, ten sixty-two, ten sixty-six, ten sixty-eight, ten seventy-two, ten seventy-six, ten eighty-two, and ten eighty-six, Niles Avenue. The ordinance is to rezone the parcels from R four A B L, single-family residential beltline overlay, to I two B L, heavy industrial beltline overlay, sh- excuse me, and I two, uh, heavy industrial beltline overlay, to M R C three C V L, mixed residential, commercial conditional beltline overlay. Uh, and the recommended action is favorable as amended.
Motion is to adopt. Any discussion? Hearing none. Let's open the vote on the motion to adopt.
Please vote. Please continue to hold. The vote is now open. Will everyone please vote?
Mr. Shook, how do you vote?
Aye.
Winslow?
In favor.
Brown?
Yea.
Bond?
Aye.
All votes are cast in the affirmative.
The vote is now closed. Populating vote.
Please mute your phones if you're not talking.
Populating vote. Fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays. It's adopted. Next item, Mr. Chair.
Item number two, twenty-one oh zero two eighty-five, zoning case number Z twenty-one thirty-nine, thirty-three ninety-three Jonesboro Road. The ordinance is to rezone from R four, single-family residential, to I one C, light industrial conditional. And the recommended action is to, uh, send back to zoning committee in the third quarter C D P, um, update. So I will, uh, move to do so, to send back to zoning committee.
Okay, there's a motion to refer back to the committee. Is there a second? Is there a second to refer back to?
Second.
Is there a second to refer back to committee?
What's more on?
Second by Ms. Westmoreland, motion by, um, Faroki to refer back to committee, any discussion? Hearing none, let's open the vote on the motion to refer back to committee.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Mr. Shook?
Aye.
Winslow?
In favor.
Brown?
Yea.
Bond?
Aye.
All votes are cast in the affirmative.
The vote is now closed. Populating votes. Populating votes. Fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays, it's referred back to the zoning committee. Next item.
And the final item is item number three, twenty-one, excuse me, twenty O sixteen forty-one, zoning case number Z twenty fifty-nine, nine-ten, nine twenty-two, nine twenty-eight, Member Drive, the ordinance is to rezone from R four, single-family residential, to R five C, two-family residential conditional, and the recommended action is to adverse.
Favor the recommended action, it's adverse, any discussion? Alright, the motion is to adverse, let's open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Mr. Shook, how do you vote?
Aye.
Winslow?
In favor.
Brown?
Yea.
Westmoreland?
In favor.
Bond?
Aye.
All votes are cast in the affirmative.
The vote is now closed. Populating votes. Populating votes. Fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays, it is adverse.
And that concludes, uh, this week's report from, from the zoning committee, thank you.
Thank you. And now we will move to the next standing committee, which is Transportation Committee, the Honorable Andre Dickens Chair.
Alrighty, we just have one item, and that item is on page... How did that just skip? If the resolution twenty-one R forty thirty-seven, um, just trying to find the page number. Oh, okay, it's on page forty-two, item number one. And this is twenty-one R forty thirty-seven, it's A and E Design Services with Atlanta Terminal Leaders LLC at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport, uh, this was for an initial amount of a billion dollars, not exceeding a million dollars, and we, um, moved it as favorable on condition, and the condition was that the I Pro report would be provided by today's meeting, but the I Pro report has not been provided, and so what the Department of Aviation has requested is that this item be held in the breast of council, so that the I Pro report may be provided in two weeks. So, Madam President, I will make the motion to hold this item in the breast of council for two weeks.
Is there a second?
Sure, second.
Okay, uh, before I call on you, Ms. I, I will ask the, uh, parliamentarian, the, uh, motion to hold in the breast of council, is it the same as table with no debate? If not debatable or amendable, it will take a majority vote, so let's open the vote on the motion to hold in the breast of council.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Ms. Winslow, how do you vote?
In favor.
Brown?
In favor.
Westmoreland?
In favor.
Bond?
Aye.
All votes are cast in the affirmative.
The vote is now closed.
That concludes the report, oh.
Hold on, please, look, please hold, Mr. Dickens, let's get the vote first.
Populating votes. Fourteen yeas, one nay.
Fourteen yeas, one nay, it is in the breast, upheld in the breast of council, and now I will call on Ms. I.
Yeah, I just, well, I, I had wanted to discuss, but I'll explain my vote instead. Um, I don't know if people have seen an email from our Inspector General this morning, uh, she is starting to do her work and look at all of, um, the I Pro in particular, and she has raised this, a concern with us forwarding papers, um, on condition of receiving the I Pro report, where then the I Pro report isn't actually considered by the committee, which, so, I, I think it's a, it, it went to the Finance Executive Committee, I don't know if it went to other members, I'm gonna change my practice in finance exec of not moving papers forward on condition, but rather holding them in committee, so that the I Pro report can actually be considered in committee, instead of it just being sort of a clerical attachment that is actually there before our vote, so, um, that would've been my preference to send this back to committee, it could still be back before us in two days, um, but, um, but anyway, that's where we are now, and why I raised my hand and said, I think it's a better practice to send it back.
Thank you, Ms. I, and, uh, I concur with your comments, the whole purpose of the I Pro reviewing, uh, the legislation and giving a report before you vote, is so that the council and the committee can have full information before vote, so I would hope that the council would consider, uh, making sure that those reports are attached, and they are able to be deliberated on and into committee before coming to council. Um, Ms. Archibald, you're next.
Yeah, I just wanna say, I don't disagree with either of you, but having it tabled, and then when the I Pro is attached, us making the decision as a council to send it back to committee is not forestalled at all, so, uh, just wanted to say that, and I appreciate, uh, that we're getting this kind of guidance, uh, at this point, and we will certainly follow that course, but as relates to, uh, where we are now, we can always send it back to the committee, I just wanted to make that point, after we untable it and make that vote to do so, if we in fact decide, it, decide to handle it that way, so, anyway, thanks.
Any other matter? Alright, let's move to the next, oh, hold on one second, Mr. Dickens.
Well, um, in light of that, um, you know, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider we could send it back to committee.
Second.
And then what's second by Westmoreland, a motion by Dickens to reconsider, uh, the motion to table, any discussion? Alright, uh, I'm, gee, I suppose that, uh, we, all we need is a, uh, motion, let's reconsider that motion, and just do a motion to bring it off of the table, and then you can, I'll refer it, Mr. Dickens, so gee, can you give me the motion to just remove it from the table?
Okay, I make a motion that we remove it from the table?
Is there a second? Second by Westmoreland, motion by Dickens to remove it from the table, any discussion? Please mute your phone if you're not talking, hearing none, let's open the vote on removing the item from the table.
Please hold. The vote is now open. Will everyone please vote?
Ms. Shepherd, how do you vote? Ms. Shepherd? Okay, Mr. Shook, how do you vote?
Aye.
Winslow?
In favor.
Brown?
In favor.
Bond?
Aye.
All votes are cast in the affirmative.
The vote is now closed. Populating votes. Populating votes. Fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays, it is off the table, what is your pleasure, Mr. Dickens?
Yes, I make a motion that we refer this back to the Transportation Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Moreland, motion by, to refer back to Transportation Committee, any discussion? Hearing none, let's open the vote on the motion to refer back to the Transportation Committee.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Mr. Bond, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brown?
In favor.
Winslow?
In favor.
Shook?
Aye.
All votes are cast in the affirmative.
The vote is now closed. Populating votes. Populating votes. Fifteen yeas, zero nays, on the motion to refer back.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays, it is referred back to the Transportation Committee. Thank you, next item.
That concludes the report of the Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Dickens, we are now at Finance Executive Committee, the Honorable Jennifer, oh, it is adopted, well, the, the motion is not, it's not adopted, you just said it's, it's adopted, it is referred to committee, I believe I said that, the motion was to refer, and it has been referred, we are now out of Transportation into Finance Executive Committee, and the Honorable Jennifer, I, Chair.
Uh, thank you, Council President, my first item is item number one on page forty-six, it is twenty-one O zero zero seven one, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor for designee to enter into a special procurement agreement, S P F one-two-zero-zero-five-two-one, Professional Development Services, Carl Vincent Institute for, with the University of Georgia pursuant to section two-dash-eleven ninety-one-point-one, Article ten, procurement and real estate code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, on behalf of the Department of Finance, for three years and amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, in zero sense, all contract work to be charged to and paid from the funding numbers of the sureant and for other purposes, and the motion was to file.
Motion is to file, any discussion? Hearing none, let's open the vote on the motion to file.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Mr. Hillis, how do you vote? Okay, Mr. Shook?
Aye.
Winslow?
In favor.
Brown?
In favor.
Bond?
Aye.
All votes are cast in the affirmative.
The vote is now closed. Populating votes. Populating votes. Populating votes. Madam President, we've added, uh, system error, um, the final vote is fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays, it is unanimously filed. Okay, next item.
Item number two is twenty-one O O seven O two, an ordinance by council members Carla Smith, Andre Elbin, Andre Dickens, Andrea from Shepherd, as substituted and amended number three by Finance Executive Committee to amend chapter two, Article three, Division one, section two-dash-one-ninety-B, and chapter two, Article four, section two-dash-one-ninety-six of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, to establish the Mayor's Office of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to create the appropriate department organizations, and to anticipate and appropriate the necessary funding in connection with the creation of the Mayor's Office of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer and the Commissioner of the Department of Human Resources to transfer any positions currently assigned to any officer department operating under the executive branch to the Mayor's Office of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, as shall be necessary to facilitate the immediate commencement of the operation of the Mayor's Office of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, and for other purposes, and this item was favorable on substitute as amended.
Okay, the motion is to adopt, any discussion? Hearing none, let's open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Mr. Shook, how do you vote?
Aye.
Winslow?
In favor.
Brown?
In favor.
Bond?
Aye.
All votes are cast in the affirmative.
The vote is now closed. Populating votes. Fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays, it's adopted.
Alright, uh, my next item is item number three, twenty-one O O seven O four, an ordinance by council members Andre Dickens and Andrea Elbin to amend the Charter of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, adopted under and by virtue of the authority of the Municipal Home Rule Act of nineteen sixty-five, O T G A, section thirty-six, thirty-five, as amended by amending subpart A, Article three, Executive Chapter five, Civil Service Systems, Section three dash five oh five, to permit the hiring of civilian personnel who shall be entitled to receive their regular pension payments, but shall acquire no further pension or civil service rights by virtue of such employment for terms in excess of five-hundred-and-twenty days, and for other purposes, this is a charter amendment, um, so this would be the second reading and the first adoption, the motion is to adopt, um, on this second read and first adoption.
Motion is to adopt, any discussion? Hearing none, let's open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Okay, let's see, I'll continue this out of my way, Mr. Bond, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Yea.
Okay, Ms. Winslow?
In favor.
And Mr. Shook?
Aye.
All votes are cast in the affirmative.
The vote is now closed. Populating votes. Fifteen yays, zero nays.
Fifteen yays, zero nays. It's adopted.
All right, the next item is number four on page forty-seven, twenty-one oh, oh, seven, three, six. An amended ordinance by Finance Executive Committee to waive the source selection and payment provisions contained in chapter two, Article ten of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, the Procurement and Real Estate Code, including but not limited to section two dash eleven eighty-seven, to authorize the mayor who designate to execute amendment number one for employee benefits agreement FC one zero three eight nine with A, and simply cross the shield of Georgia Inc. for group health insurance POS HDHP, Medicare Advantage Insurance PPO, life insurance, dental insurance PPO Dental and Administration of Flexible Spending, B, Kaiser Foundation Health Plan of Georgia Inc. for group health insurance HMO HDHP, and Senior Medicare Advantage Insurance HMO, C, United Healthcare Insurance Company for Medicare Advantage Insurance PPO and voluntary vision insurance, D, Aetna Life Insurance Inc. for dental insurance DHMO, E, MetLife Insurance for voluntary benefits, and F, American Family Life Assurance Company of Columbia, of Columbus, Inc. for short-term disability by extending the agreement for a period not to exceed twelve months, on behalf of the Department of Human Resources and amount not to exceed one hundred sixty-three million, three hundred forty-eight thousand, six hundred nine dollars and forty-eight cents to be charged to and paid from accounts listed herein and for other purposes. And this item was favorable as amended.
Favorable as amended. The motion is to adopt. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Let's open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Mr. Bond, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brown?
In favor.
Winslow?
In favor.
Shook?
Aye.
Parroki?
Yes.
All votes are cast in the affirmative.
The vote is now closed. Populating votes. Populating votes. Fifteen yays, zero nays.
Fifteen yays, zero nays. It's adopted.
All right, the next item is item number five, twenty-one R, thirty-nine, thirty-six. A resolution by Councilor Andrea Elbin authorizing the mayor who designate on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to enter into amendment number five for contract number FC eight-seven-eight-six, Program Management Team Services with Atkins North America, Inc. to add additional funding in amount not to exceed one million, six hundred thousand dollars and zero cents, and to extend the terms of the contract on a month-to-month basis for a period not to exceed six months and for other purposes. Um, so the motion is to adopt.
Motion is to adopt. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Let's open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Mr. Bond, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brown?
In favor.
Winslow?
In favor.
And Shook?
Aye.
All votes are cast in the affirmative.
The vote is now closed. Populating votes. Populating votes. Fifteen yays, zero nays.
Fifteen yays, zero nays. It's adopted. Madam Chair?
All right, the next item is item number six. Which is twenty-one R, forty fifty-four. A resolution by Councilor Andrea Elbin authorizing the mayor who designate to issue task order number FC one zero six four one I dash ninety-two for contract FC one zero six four I job order contracting services small with JSC Construction LLC for the Atlanta Children's Eternal Flame Project on behalf of the Department of Enterprise Asset Management for the office of the mayor in an amount not to exceed two hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred seventy-two dollars and thirty-five cents. All work to be charged to and paid from accounts listed herein and for other purposes. And this, um, the item came out of committee favorably.
Motion is to adopt. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Let's open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Mr. Bond, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brown?
In favor.
Winslow?
In favor.
And Shook?
Aye.
All votes are cast in the affirmative.
The vote is now closed. Populating votes. Populating votes. Fifteen yays, zero nays.
Fifteen yays, zero nays. It's adopted.
Um, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. We now go to City Utilities Committee. The Honorable Natlin Archibald, Chair.
Thank you. We completed our work at the committee level. We do not have a report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We now go to Community Development Human Services Committee. The Honorable Matt Westmoreland, Chair.
Thank you, Madam President. We also do not have a report.
That is wonderful. Now, we will go to our executive session. Members have been text the secured line for executive session. Can I please have someone from the Law Department, uh, give an explanation as to why we are going into executive session? Is there anyone from the Law Department? And if we, if so, would you please make sure they are unmuted?
Yes, um, Madam City Council President?
Yes.
This is Nina Hickson. The reason for the executive session is to discuss litigation.
Thank. There's a motion, uh, can I have a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, I think I heard Masakai and a second by who?
Bond.
A second by Bond. Motion by Masakai, second by Bond to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation. Can we open the vote?
Please hold. The vote is now open. Will everyone please vote?
Mr. Brown, how do you vote?
In favor.
Winslow?
In favor.
Shook?
Aye.
All votes are cast in the affirmative.
The vote is now closed. Populating votes. Fifteen yays, zero nays.
Fifteen yays, zero nays. We will now exit, uh, this meeting and go into executive session for the public. We will return, uh, for our items for media consideration, items to be referred and the adjourned, general remarks and the adjourned roll call. So if members would please exit this line and go to the secured line, please hit your speaker button so that I know that you're present. And I will see you, uh, we will see you when we get out of executive session. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and has the exec session access information been provided?
Yes, and I'll send it to you again.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, members, if you're all the system, please hit your speaker button so I can tell them to press before we start. Again, if you're just joining, if you could please hit your speaker button so that I know that you're pressed. Okay, Mr. Clark, let's have it call through.
Council President Felicia A. Moore.
Present. Mr. Clark.
Yes, Council President Felicia A. Moore.
Present.
Council Members Michael Julian Bond.
Here.
Matt Wes Moreland.
Here.
Andre Dickens.
Here.
Carla Smith.
Here.
Amir Faroki.
Here.
Antonio Brown.
Here.
Cleta Winslow. Nathaniel Mobley Archibon.
Here.
Jennifer N. Ide.
Here.
Howard Shook. JP Matzakite.
Here.
Dustin Hillis.
Here.
Andrea L. Boone.
Present.
Marcy Collier Overstreet.
Present.
Joyce and Shepherd.
Present.
Corn present.
Any members, any more members join?
Council Member Winslow here.
Shook, Asher, Ashley.
Okay, Winslow and Shook, anyone else?
Duly noted, Madam President, that will be all members present.
All right, thank you. Now let's open the vote. I will ask for a motion to exit executive session.
I'll move Smith.
I'll move.
Second.
Second by Bond, motion by Smith to exit executive session. Let's open the vote.
Please hold. The vote is now open. Will everyone please vote?
Okay, let's see. Ms. Boone, how do you vote?
Yes.
Hillis?
Yes.
Shook?
Aye.
Winslow?
In favor.
Brown?
In favor.
Dickens?
In favor.
All votes are cast in the affirmative.
The vote is now closed. Populating vote. Populating vote. Fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays. We have exited executive session. And now we will move on, on our agenda to papers, personal papers for immediate consideration. Are there any personal papers for immediate consideration?
Council Member Hillis.
All right, proceed.
Thanks, and everyone should have received copies of this. This is Elm's ID two seven one one three. Resolution by Council Members Dustin Hillis and Amir Faroki, authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendants in the case of RHB LLC and Smyrna Ready Mixed Concrete LLC versus city, excuse me, versus Atlanta City Council at Al. And City of Atlanta at Al Civil Action File Number twenty twenty C V three 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 nine zero. Pending the Superior Court of Fulton County of Georgia by remanding a special use permit application number U dash eighteen dash forty three to the Atlanta City Council and to the zoning review board for a new public hearing and for other purposes, whereas RHB LLC and Smyrna Ready Mixed Concrete LLC versus City, Atlanta City Council at Al and City of Atlanta at Al Civil Action File Number twenty twenty C V three 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 nine zero. It is also pending the Superior Court of Fulton County regarding the denial of special use permit application number U eighteen dash forty three. And whereas the special use permit application number U dash eighteen dash forty three was denied by the Atlanta City Council on January twenty one, twenty twenty via ordinance number nineteen dash O dash ten nine five. And whereas after the denial, petitioners RHB LLC and Smyrna Ready Mixed Concrete LLC filed a lawsuit against the Atlanta City Council, its members, and against the City of Atlanta alleging denial was improper based on procedural grounds, among other claims. And whereas the city attorney has done an extensive review of the facts and the law and has determined the defendant's potential financial exposure in defending the petitioner's claim as in excess of the proposed settlement terms. And whereas petitioners have agreed to accept a remand of the special use permit number U dash eighteen dash forty three to the Atlanta City Council and to the zoning review board for a new public hearing and settlement of this litigation. And whereas this remand does not in any way hinder the discretion of the Atlanta City Council to approve or deny the special use permit application number U dash eighteen dash forty three after a new public hearing at the zoning review board. And whereas the city attorney has done an extensive review of the facts and the law and has determined that the proposed terms of the settlement are in the best interest of the city and recommends that the city council approve the same. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, that the city attorney is authorized to settle RHB LLC and Smyrna Ready Mixed Concrete LLC versus Atlanta City Council at Al and City of Atlanta at Al Civil Action File Number twenty twenty C V three 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 nine zero by remanding the special use permit application number U dash eighteen dash forty three to the Atlanta City Council and to the zoning review board for a new public hearing. Be it further resolved that in consideration of these terms, these actions by the Atlanta City Council, petitioners will dismiss the lawsuit, RHB LLC and Smyrna Ready Mixed LLC versus Atlanta City Council at Al and City of Atlanta at Al Civil Action File Number twenty twenty C V three 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 nine zero and all claims associated with said lawsuit. Make a motion to approve.
Excuse me, there's a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bond, motion by Hillis. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, if we can open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Mr. Dickens, how do you vote?
In favor.
Brown?
In favor, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Winslow?
In favor.
Shook?
Aye.
Boone?
Yes.
All votes are cast in the affirmative.
The vote is now closed. Populating vote. Populating vote. Fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays. It's adopted. Are there any other items for immediate consideration? All right, we will now go to items to be referred to committee. I will go in this order. Westmoreland. Smith. Overstreet. Hillis. Faroki. Dickens. Brown. Bond. Archibong. And Boone. All right, so let's start with Mr. Westmoreland.
Thank you, Madam President. Four papers. The first is Elm's number two seven one two zero. It's an ordinance by Council Members Matt Westmoreland, J. P. Matzakite, and Howard Shook, authorizing a donation in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars and zero cents from the post to a large carry forward account, the District Eight, carry forward account, and the District Seven, carry forward account to Petrie United Methodist Church in support of a new literacy initiative at F L Sten elementary school and for other purposes.
Was that two seven one two zero?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, finance executive committee.
Next one is Elm's number two seven one two five, two seven one two five. It is a resolution by Council Members Matt Westmoreland, Carla Smith, Joyce Shepherd, Marcy Collier Overstreet, Jennifer Ide, Andrea Boone, Michael Julian Bond, Dustin Hillis, Andre Dickens, Nellie Mosby Archibong, Antonio Brown, and Amir Faroki, requesting that the Commissioner of Human Resources and the Chief Financial Officer conduct a feasibility study regarding increasing the minimum wage of all full-time city employees to a housing wage to ensure their right to live in the city they serve and for other purposes.
So that's two seven one two five to finance executive committee.
Next one is Elm's number two seven one two three. An ordinance by Council Members Matt Westmoreland, Carla Smith, Joyce Shepherd, Marcy Collier Overstreet, Jennifer Ide, Andrea Boone, Michael Julian Bond, Dustin Hillis, Andre Dickens, Nellie Mosby Archibong, Antonio Brown, and Amir Faroki, establishing a community park fund with an initial allocation in an amount not to exceed two million dollars and zero cents to support green space improvements and upgrades in underserved neighborhoods across Atlanta and for other purposes.
Two seven one two three to CDHS Committee.
And then the final is Elm's number two seven one two four. An ordinance by Council Members Matt Westmoreland, Carla Smith, Joyce Shepherd, Marcy Collier Overstreet, Andrea Boone, Michael Julian Bond, Dustin Hillis, Andre Dickens, Nellie Mosby Archibong, and Antonio Brown, establishing the building of beloved Community Affordable Housing Trust Fund and amending Charter Subpart A, Article Six, Chapter Three, Section Six thirteen B of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to add a new Paragraph Four to create an affordable housing account for the purposes of appropriating eventually two percent of the City of Atlanta General Fund to be phased in over a three-year period at the beginning of each fiscal year to ensure adequate funding for affordable housing initiatives and for other purposes.
Two seven one two four to CDHS Committee. And to, and to finance executive committee will be budgetary as well. Thank you. We will now go to Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. Elm's ID two seven one zero zero. An ordinance by Council Member Carla Smith to rezone certain properties within the Summerhill neighborhood from R four B C, single-family residential conditional, to the R four B C, single-family residential conditional for a change in conditions and for other purposes, NPUV, Council District One. And Elm's.
Two seven.
Oh, sorry, no zoning yet.
Two seven one zero zero to ZRB Enzone.
Thank you. Now Elm's number two seven one two one. An ordinance by Council Member Carla Smith, authorizing the transfer of sixty thousand dollars and zero cents from the Council District One Carry Forward Account to the Council District One Salaries Permanent Part-Time Account in the amount of fifty thousand dollars and zero cents, and the District One Distribution Account in the amount of ten thousand dollars and zero cents and for other purposes.
Two seven one two zero to Finance Executive Committee.
Two seven one two one.
Okay, wait a minute, hold on. Let me see, and maybe I'll, okay, on my sheet it was two zero, but if you say it's two one, we'll say it's two one. But it goes to Finance Executive Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Overstreet.
Thank you, Madam President. Elm's number two seven zero eight eight. An ordinance by Council Member Marcy Collier Overstreet, an ordinance to allow a sidewalk waiver payment in the amount of blank dollars for S D dash two one dash zero one six, fifteen twenty seven Willis Mill Road Southwest, and for other purposes. That blank will be filled in for committee.
Say two seven zero eight eight to Transportation Committee.
Thank you.
Mr. Hillis.
Yes. Elm's number two seven one one five. An ordinance by Council Member Dustin Hillis, authorizing a donation of an amount not to exceed seventy two thousand dollars and zero cents from the District Nine Carry Forward Account to the Atlanta Police Foundation to assist with the funding of license plate readers and surveillance cameras to be installed in Council District Nine and for other purposes.
Two seven one one five to Finance Executive Committee.
That concludes my papers. Thank you.
Uh huh, Mr. Faroki.
Thank you, Madam President. I have three papers. The first is Elm's number two seven one two two. An ordinance by Council Members Amir Faroki, Andre Dickens, Michael Julian Bond, Jennifer Ide, Nellie Mosby Archibong, and Matt Westmoreland, launching the next era of Atlanta Streets Alive and authorizing the temporary closure of Petrie Street between Mitchell Street and Seventeenth Street each Sunday from two P M. to six P M. Beginning on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, and for other purposes.
Say that is two seven one two two to Transportation Committee.
Elm's number two seven one one seven. An ordinance by Council Member Amir Faroki, authorizing the mayor or her designee to make the intersection of Edgewood Avenue Northeast and Waverly Way Northeast and always stop controlled intersection. Authorize the Atlanta Department of Transportation to install stop signs at the intersection and for other purposes.
Okay, that's two seven one, that, excuse me, two seven one one seven to Transportation Committee.
And finally Elm's number two seven one one six. An ordinance by Council Members Amir Faroki, Carla Smith, Matt Westmoreland, Andre Dickens, and J. P. Matzakite, urging the mayor or her designees to conduct a feasibility study and to prepare recommendations regarding the establishment of an office of nighttime economy and safety to be housed in the Department of the Mayor, which would advise concerning city policies to address challenges related to public safety and the economy of the City of Atlanta specific to the evening and overnight hours. It would act as a liaison, serving as advocate, mediator, policy advisor, and point of contact specifically for nocturnal life within the City of Atlanta, which would provide a report to the City of Atlanta, excuse me, which would write a report to the Atlanta City Council concerning their activities on a quarterly basis and for other purposes.
Okay, that is two one one six to Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. And Mr., okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're at Mr. Dickens.
Okay, this is Elm's number two seven one one two. An ordinance by Council Members Andre Dickens and Cleta Winslow. An ordinance authorizing the mayor or her designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to abandon a portion of Milton Street Southwest between Parson Street Southwest and Beckwood Street Southwest located lot one oh nine of the Fort Worth District of Fulton County, directing the mayor or designee to execute a quitclaim deed of the abandonment to the Robert W. Woodruff Library of the Atlanta University Center and Morehouse College, waiving sections listed of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances and for other purposes.
All right, that is two seven one one two, and that goes to Transportation Committee.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Madam President, I have a resolution. I, I actually want to have it considered as an immediate paper. I apologize, I did not have it beforehand.
Well, let's wait. Let me finish the referrals, and we'll come back to you. Mr. Bond.
Thank you, Madam President. I have several papers. The first is Elm's number two seven one two seven. An ordinance by Council Member Michael Julian Bond to amend Chapter Two, Administration. Article Two, Council, Division, Staff Section Two dash one five two, Council Assistant Subsection of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to update the total amount allocated for annual appropriations to fund costs associated with health insurance to include two permanent part-time employees in the appropriate account and for other purposes.
And that was two seven one two seven?
Yes.
Okay, that goes to Finance Executive and Committee on Council.
Okay. Next is Elm's number two seven zero nine nine. An ordinance requiring that all subsidies and economic incentives offered by the City of Atlanta to support residential development shall be restricted to projects which include the development of housing which shall be a hundred percent affordable at the sixty to a hundred percent area of median income. Well, that should be thirty. Thirty to a hundred percent median income and for other purposes.
Okay, that is two seven zero nine nine to Community Development Human Services Committee.
Okay. Next is Elm's number two seven one zero nine. A resolution by Council Member Michael Julian Bond requesting that the Commissioner of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to conduct a traffic study on Elm Streets, that should be northwest adjacent to Cook Park, to determine available permissible street parking and for other purposes.
That's two seven one zero nine to Transportation Committee.
Elm's number two seven one one zero. A resolution by Council Member Michael Julian Bond requesting the Commissioner of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to conduct a traffic study on Peter Street. That should also be northwest to deter, no, sorry, southwest to determine available street parking for local businesses as their patrons to improve mobility and public safety for the businesses and residents of the area and for other purposes.
That is two seven one one zero to Transportation Committee.
All right, next is Elm's number two seven zero nine eight. An ordinance by Council Member Michael Julian Bond, an ordinance to amend the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances. Chapter sixty-two Courts, Article Two, Municipal Court, Division One, Section six two dash two nine, Public Defender and Assistant to expand the office of the Public Defender to include an eviction defense unit to allow the offices of the Public Defender to provide assistance with evictions, defense, and collateral matters for income-eligible City of Atlanta residents and for other purposes.
That is two seven zero nine eight to Public Safety Legal Administration Committee and the Finance Executive Committee.
And next is two seven zero nine seven. A resolution by Council Member Michael Julian Bond, a resolution urging the Georgia General Assembly to amend OCGA sixteen dash one one dash one seven three B, one B, to give counties and municipal corporations the authority to enact legislation requiring owners to ensure the safe storage of their firearms when outside of their immediate control in order to enhance public safety and security and for other purposes.
Two seven zero nine seven to Public Safety Legal Administration Committee and Finance Executive Committee.
Okay, next is Elm's number two seven one zero one. An ordinance by Council Member Michael Julian Bond, authorizing the mayor or her designee to reinstall the traffic signal at the intersection of Sunset Avenue and Joseph E. Boone Boulevard Northwest and for other purposes.
And that was, let me see, which, which street was that?
Joseph E. Boone and Sunset Avenue.
Okay, I'm, I'm losing it. Would you give me the number, Mr. Bond? Again, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That is two, seven, one, oh, one.
Two, seven, one, oh, one. To Transportation. Thank you.
And lastly, we have two, seven, one, oh, two. An ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, authorizing the mayor or her designee to reinstall the traffic signal at the intersection of Vine Street Northwest and Joseph E. Boone Northwest and for other purposes.
That's two, seven, one, oh, two. The Transportation Committee.
Uh, that concludes my papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Boone.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. First item, an ordinance by Councilmember Andrea- no, Elms number, Elms number two, seven, one, one, one. Two, seven, one, one, one. An ordinance by Councilmember Andrea Boone, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or her designee to make the intersection of Baker's Ferry Road Southwest and Cornell Boulevard Southwest and always stop patrol intersection near thirty-eight, twenty-two Baker's Ferry Road to authorize the Atlanta Department of Transportation to install stop, stop signs at the intersection and for other purposes.
Okay, that is, uh, two, seven, one, one, one. The Transportation.
Next item, Elms number two, seven, one, zero, seven. Two, seven, one, zero, seven. An ordinance to transfer appropriations from account number listed herein to various accounts to provide for up to three million, five hundred thousand dollars in funds by transferring general fund, unsubmitted fund balance for the purpose of contributing to funding efforts for Partners for Home to provide and sustain critical services expected to be exhausted and to scale the Home First and Lift Initiative.
That is two, seven, one, zero, seven. And that will go to C D H S Committee.
Next item, Elms number two, seven, one, zero, eight. Two, seven, one, zero, eight. An ordinance by Councilmember Andrea Boone, an ordinance by Councilmember Andrea Boone, authorizing the mayor or her designee to amend S P dash S dash one, two, one, zero, three, two, zero, Solid Waste Services Supplemental Staffing with Georgia Works, Inc., on behalf of the Department of Public Works, to extend the term of this agreement for nine months retroactively effective November twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, through July twentieth, twenty twenty-two, in accordance with the provision of Section two, dash, one, one, six, three of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, and to add funding in an amount not exceed one hundred fifty thousand dollars and zero cents all contracted work to be charged to and paid from the funding numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Okay, that is two, seven, one, oh, eight. And one, zero, eight. And that will go to, I would send that to City Utilities and Finance Exec.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Okay, we're now, anyone else for our papers to be referred?
Well, you had Archibong, so, Archibong Redhurst. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm. Yes, yeah, it's the Elms number two, seven, one, one, four. An ordinance by Councilmember Natalie Archibong, authorizing the mayor or her designee to install traffic calming devices on Hudson Street Northeast between Jose L. Williams Drive Northeast and Hardy Street Northeast to waive certain provisions of Section one, thirty-eight, dash, eighty-four, subsection D of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances and for other purposes.
That is two, seven, one, one, four. And that goes to Transportation Committee.
Thank you. That's it.
All right, Mr. Hillis?
Yes, the immediate consideration paper that we approved, I need to make a motion to send that post haste to the mayor's office, that the administration's request. So I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Second by who?
Bond.
Okay, is there any objection to sending this to the mayor's office post haste? All right, if not, let's open, well, let's not, let's send it forward without objection on unanimous consent to the mayor's office post haste, Mr. Clerk.
Unanimous consent of members present at fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. And Mr. Mathenberg, I am locked out again of my computer. If you could help me out, I appreciate it. All right, thank you, Mr. Hillis. Um, now we'll go to Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Colley, I have a resolution for immediate consideration. Um, this resolution is specifically to the Community Loan Fund that we established on City Council and to remove barriers set within the Community Loan Fund suggested by Lonnie Sabore within Invest Atlanta, because we have pending applications from small business owners that are struggling to remain open, and by removing these barriers, we would create opportunity for them to be able to go through the application process and potentially be approved. So this is a resolution to amend Resolution nineteen, R, dash, thirty-eight, seventy-seven, adopted by the Atlanta City Council on August fifth, two, two thousand nineteen, and approved by the mayor on August thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, for the purpose of allowing applicants to be considered for the Community Loan Fund Program prior to completing the required technical assistance and for other purposes, whereas the Atlanta Development Authority, Invest Atlanta, has duly created and is existing under and by virtue of the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia, in particular, the Development Authority's Law of State, and an activating resolution of the City Council of the City of Atlanta duly adopted on February seventh, seventeen, nineteen ninety-seven, and approved by the mayor of the city on February twentieth, nineteen ninety-seven, and is now existing and operating as a public body, uh, corporate and politic of the state. And whereas Resolution nineteen, dash, R, thirty-eight, seventy-seven established a new Community Loan Fund targeted to encourage micro and small business development within the City of Atlanta that has been unserved by Invest Atlanta's traditional small business loan tools. And whereas the Community Loan Fund prioritizes direct loans to credit disadvantaged entrepreneurs by using non-traditional underwriting standards, it is in the best interest of encouraging micro and small business development by allowing the small business owners to complete the technical assistance training after submitting an application for the Community Loan Fund. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, that Resolution nineteen, R, thirty-eight, seventy-seven, adopted by the City Council on August fifth, two thousand nineteen, and approved by the mayor on August thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, be amended to allow business owners to complete the technical assistance training after submitting an application for the Community Loan Fund. Be it finally resolved that all resolutions and parts of resolutions in conflict here with are hereby waived to the extent of the conflict. Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, Archibong. Motion to adopt by Mr. Brown is second by Ms. Archibong. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, let's open the vote, Mr. Clerk.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Okay, we are waiting on votes. I, if you could, uh, put them on the other screen so I can see who has not voted. I know Mr. Bond is not on the system. How do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Winslow?
In favor.
Mr. Shook, would you close the vote? Okay, I can see now. Mr. Shook? Mr. Shook? Ms. Boone? Yes. Hillis?
Yes.
Aye, okay, aye, just voted. Uh, Westmoreland?
Yes.
Our votes are cast in the affirmative.
The vote is now closed. Populating vote. Populating vote.
Please meet your phones if you're not talking.
Madam President, I actually, this is Councilmember Overstreet. I actually had my hand raised, um, for discussion.
Yeah, I was gonna do that until you closed the vote. Give me one second. I see you.
Okay.
Populating vote.
Okay, I think we have them all. Mr. Shook, did you join us? Okay, our votes are cast, Mr. Clerk.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays. It's adopted. Now we will go to, um, Ms. Overstreet and then Ms. Archibong.
Normally, this is when I have a complaint about, um, immediate consideration, um, items, but I definitely, um, have been asking for, um, barriers to be removed from, uh, our constituents or our residents capturing these fund dollars. So, uh, thank you, Councilmember, um, Brown, for this, uh, paper. It's very necessary. And, uh, because who loses out most, um, when we have these type of vari- barriers in our funds that we're trying to disperse to help the community are the ones that need it the most, especially Southside small business owners, brand-new, yeah, new, uh, business owners. And, um, so I just hope going forward that our, um, intention is always to make it as easy as possible and in a fair way, uh, for our funds to be dispersed to those that need it. So, thank you.
All right, the next speaker is Ms. Archibong.
Thank you. And I wanted to echo much of what, uh, Councilmember Overstreet said. I want to thank Councilmember Brown for his leadership on this. As, um, the council knows, the Small Business Advisory Council, uh, that we approved some time ago, has been meeting. And one of their charges is to look at barriers to success. And Lonnie Sabore has been a very, very active and engaged member of the Small Business Advisory Council. And so this is exactly the kind of work product that we wanted to have as a result of, uh, not only the advisory board, but of those who are working in, uh, this space to let us know how we can do things differently and better to help our businesses that need the help the most. So, thank you very much, uh, Councilmember Brown.
Anyone else? All right, you know, we're now at a general remarks. Anyone have any announcements or general remarks?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Bond?
I have an announcement. On this Wednesday, we will be continuing our citywide food distribution in partnership with Hello Fresh Frat Industries and Second Helpings Atlanta. We will be on the east side of town, uh, on Wednesday at the, in partnership with Councilwoman Natalie Archibong at First Iconium Baptist Church on October the sixth at three P M. That's five, two, four, Moreland Avenue. Uh, we had a very successful, uh, distribution last week, uh, with Councilmember Overstreet over at the, uh, Hill, oh, Hillside. We actually, uh, almost ran out of, uh, resources, but the, everyone was served, and it was, uh, it was very tremendous. It was a huge crowd over there. So that just underscores that, uh, the, we're not, we may be closing in on the medical side of the pandemic, uh, but the economic adverse effects are still very, very real and are impacting our city. Over twenty-five percent of indigenous Atlanta residents are negatively, have been negatively affected by COVID-19. That's over a hundred and twenty-five thousand people, potentially. So on Wednesday, October the sixth, there is no prerequisite. Those in need, uh, can, can come. And of course, we will be there until all supplies are exhausted. Again, that is the Meals With Meaning grab and go Wednesday, October the sixth, First Iconium Baptist Church, five, twenty-four, Moreland Avenue, at three P M. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Overstreet.
Um, thank you, Madam President. And yes, thank you for that partnership, Councilmember, uh, Bond. Um, food insecurity is still an issue in our communities, and we definitely did, um, a huge service last Wednesday. And, and I'm sure, uh, you'll be able to do the same this Wednesday. Um, but I have an announcement. I'm excited to announce that on October sixteenth, um, we will be having a vaccination concert, a COVID relief concert. We're calling it Vax Concert at Greenbrier Mall from two o'clock P M. to six o'clock P M. at Greenbrier. And it will be featuring Jukebox, Anthony David, Tony Perry, and Kiki Wyatt. We'll also have vaccinations administered by Morehouse School of Medicine. No appointment necessary. We have about fifteen food trucks that are gonna be there, um, and a V I P. section. Of course, all of council will be invited. I want you all to come with your lawn chairs and your masks. We will also have masks available and plenty of security. Uh, Fulton County has, uh, agreed to, um, help as well as A P. D. and Greenbrier Mall security. We have a, a security plan. So I will be sending out all of this information to everyone in my newsletter, uh, as a press release and inviting all of, uh, council. So again, that's Greenbrier Mall on Saturday, October sixteenth, from two P M. to six P M. It's free admission, and we're getting everyone vaccinated in our communities. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, um, Madam President, just wanting to thank everyone. Um, Mr. Ray Carter and all of, um, A P. D. and everyone that attended our Fight the Blight event this morning in the rain. Um, we, um, successfully have began demolishing the old Shell gas station located at Martin Luther King and two eighty-five. It has been vacant, um, since two thousand fifteen. And we are getting the folks that are homeless. We're gonna get them the resources that they need that were living there, and we are working on the other, um, issues in that area. So this was a big, huge win for District Ten and the M P. U. I. and M P. U. H. community. Um, we have begun demolishing the old Shell gas station at two eighty-five. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Westmoreland. Mr. Westmore.
Yeah, yes, I can wait for whoever that was.
Just wait, go ahead. I have the speaker button up. I'll get to, I'll go back. Go ahead.
Okay, um.
I think he wants to wait.
No, 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 I'm okay. My announcement was around, um, probably last Fri- Monday. Um, we were supposed to have a C D. P. hearing that was not able to take place because of a technical issue. Um, and so I wanted everyone to know that that has been rescheduled for Monday, October twenty-fifth, um, at six P M. Um, that is the meeting where the C D. P. rewrite will come up with a conversation, followed by the, um, C D. H. S. Committee meeting the next day. And then, because it needs to be adopted before October thirty-first, um, we'll need to have a special called meeting that week. Um, and so I'll be working with the Council President and the clerk to make sure that all of that is squared away. But I wanted everyone who may not have been aware to know that that meeting did not happen last week as scheduled. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Overstreet.
Yes, I actually have the flyer before me now, and I was not able to, uh, give all of the participants of the Vax Concert, um, and I'd like to, um, acknowledge the partners. Um, it's a partner with N double A. C. P. Atlanta. And, uh, we've met over at Greenbrier several times now. Uh, we're also partnering with East Point City Council, Karen Renee, Joyce Latel from V one oh three will be our D J. Or our M. C. Um, and Champion Pharmacy is a partner, Cricket Wireless is a partner, um, D J. Supreme B. Centerwell Senior Primary Care is a partner, and V one oh three. So just wanted to mention that. Care is a partner, and V one oh three, so just wanted to mention that, and thank you to all of those partners, especially the N double A C P, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
Yes, I want to make an announcement that on October the twelfth, next Tuesday, unfortunately, it's at the same time that we'll be actually having our utilities meeting, but we will have, uh, the grand opening of the Southside Trail, uh, over at Pittsburgh Yards, we'll be there, uh, with the mayor for the opening of Southside Trail, Beltline, the Beltline, I'm sorry, Beltline Southside Trail, and I just want to make that a public announcement for folks who are listening, uh, and if y'all can come, uh, that's next Tuesday, October the twelfth, at nine thirty, the opening of the Southside Trail, Beltline Southside Trail, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, if not, Mr. Clerk, the adjournment roll call, please.
Today's meeting was held in accordance with OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash one regarding open meetings, the adjournment roll call, the time is three forty-two P M. Council President Felicia Moore?
Present.
Councilmembers Michael Julian Bond?
Here.
Matt Westmoreland?
Here.
Andre Dickens? Or, yes, Carla Smith?
Here.
Amir Faroki?
Here.
Antonio Brown?
Here.
Cleta Winslow?
Present.
Natalie Mose, the Archibon?
Here.
Jennifer N. I.
Here.
Howard Shook?
Aye.
J P Massakite?
Here.
Dustin Hillis?
Here.
Andrea L. Boone?
Present.
Marcy Collier, Overstreet?
Present.
Joyce and Shepherd?
Present.
Thank you.
All right, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, Smith. Motion by Bond, second by Smith, to adjourn, and without objection, we are hereby adjourned on unanimous consent, thank you, members, and have a good rest of the day, bye-bye.